I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boston Spa Central School District, Board of Education for November fifteenth. Can we all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of our liberty and justice.
I'd like to welcome everyone who is here in person, like to welcome those who are watching on the live stream. For those of you who are here in person, if for any reason we had to evacuate this room, the two exits are behind me in either corner that lead outside, and there is the exit that leads out into the hallway at the entrance of the library. First on our agenda tonight is recognition. Superintendent Tuka?
Thank you very much. I am pleased to welcome our high school troupe. Do you have Mr. Lopez come up?
So this is part of our cast and crew and our acting cast, I'm sorry, our acting crew of our production of the play That Goes Wrong. It's a play within a play and it's been very challenging for our students because they really are playing two roles. They're playing an actor onstage who's playing another part, and they have to switch in between those two parts pretty seamlessly as things are going wrong. And so we're going to start off our little presentation. Charlotte, take it away.
Hi, my name is Charlotte, and thank you so much for having us here tonight. I play Sandra, who plays Florence Collimore in Troop's production of the play That Goes Wrong. We open tomorrow, and we're so excited, and we really hope that all of you come. The show will run the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth at seven, and on the eighteenth we also have a matinee at 1:00 P.M. Tickets prices are $10 for adults and $5 for students and seniors, which, I mean, you can't beat that price, we're way cheaper than Broadway.[148.44][148.44](Laughter).
Hello, my name is Peter, and I'll be playing Robert in the show. And you may be asking yourself, what is the play That Goes Wrong, what's it all about? And, well, the Cornley Polytechnic Drama Society, which is fresh from such hits as Two Sisters, The Lion and the Wardrobe, Cat, and James and the Peach. It has received a substantial bequest, and it's putting on a performance of the murder at Haversham Manor. It's a 1920s styled murder mystery play.
During the performance, a play within a play, the actors will experience a handful of disasters which befallen them, including doors sticking, props falling from the walls, and floors collapsing. Oh, yeah. I'm Roman, and I'm playing Max, who plays one, but two amazing characters.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, sorry, that was rude interruption. You will witness our very own cast members misplacing props, forgetting lines, missing cues, breaking character, mispronouncing words, stepping on fingers, being hidden inside of grandfather clocks, oh, yes, and being manhandled offstage.
Come on, Peter, you're not even telling the best part. Get this, even one cast member is knocked unconscious, and then they try to hide this character in a set piece. I mean, who does that, right? It's hysterical. My character, of course, are professionally done with taste.
You egotistical, good-for-nothing, rude, and inconsiderate.
Boys! We are here in front of the Board of Education promoting our show. Let's take a breath. Let's calm down. Who's next?
So sorry.
I'm more sorry.
No, I'm more sorry. We do apologize. Please forgive us.
Please forgive him. And, ah, s- s- s-
My grandmother, no, my grandmama, my grandmama always said-
If you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all.
Again, really sorry. You know I'm the more sorry one, I mean, I'm sorry about him, he's-
But I'm more sorry.
Please come see our show. You're sure to have a good time, and you'll laugh a lot. We've been handing, oh, we are handing out flyers, and we have free admission coupons for everyone on the board. Thank you again, and we are part of the cast and crew of the play That Goes Wrong.
Thank you, high school troupe. Looking forward to that show.
Absolutely, and again, thank you so much to Mr. Lopez and all of the parent volunteers and other staff members who work so hard to support our students in our wonderful play productions. And that's it for recognition? All right, thank you. And next is our student government, Katie and Ben.
Good evening, everyone. Student government is currently running their annual food drive. On Friday afternoon, we will be taking all donations to the First Presbyterian Church in Boston Spa, and on Monday, we will be distributing Thanksgiving bags to the community.
Winter sports have started this week, and we are looking forward to cheering on our teams in their upcoming games. And of course, this weekend, we look forward to watching Troop's production of the play That Goes Wrong.
After the holiday, the Foreign Language Department will be hosting its annual lip sync night in the auditorium on November thirtieth at 7:00.
Save the date for one of our favorite events, holiday trivia, which will take place on December thirteenth at 6:30 in the high school library. More details coming soon. We wish you a wonderful and relaxing Thanksgiving break.
And that's it?
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much for all that wonderful information.
Jason, can I just-
Absolutely, please.
The holiday trivia is where you would like the Board of Education to be present, right?
Yes.
To win, okay.
Yes, to win.
To win, yes, to win. That's on the thirteenth, and what time?
Uh, 6:30.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There is a little bit of a tradition of the board participating, winning, almost winning.
Showing up.
Showing up. Okay, we are now at the first period for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Thank you. So, as I always do, I'm going to read my guidance. The Board of Education welcomes district residents, parents, and other interested persons to its meeting. Community involvement at board meetings is encouraged so that the board can better understand and represent the views of its constituents. Please be aware, however, that information such as individual student information or particular personnel issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. Speakers will be called upon individually. When recognized by the board president, please approach the podium and state your name and residence. Statements are restricted to a maximum of two minutes, and speakers will be notified by the board president when his or her time has expired. The board and the district staff take the public comment very seriously, however, the board will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period. The board asks the public's cooperation in maintaining a safe and respectful environment, and the board president reserves the right to limit individual comments if it is deemed necessary. To achieve this, speakers will please not make slanderous attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the district, a member of the audience, or a member of the public. Speakers will not use profane, vulgar, threatening, or disparaging language, or racial or ethnic slurs. Speakers will not please disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts or other disruptive conduct or behavior, either during the speaker's assigned time or at any other time during the meeting. I ask that speakers please address your comments to the board as a whole, not to any individual board member or member of the administration. Speakers understand that a failure to comply with these rules for maintaining a respectful and productive environment may result in early termination of the speaker's allotted time, a denial of future requests to speak, any other actions deemed necessary by the president of the board, or where appropriate in the matter of health and safety measures to superintendent of schools. And our first speaker, Ms. Terizzi?
Hi, I'm Erin Terizzi. I live at 78 Meadow Roo Place. I'm here to address the buses, the bus issue in our district. This is the first year that I've really had to deal with the buses since my daughter's been in, you know, she's in sixth grade now, and she hasn't taken the bus, and she's been in about first grade. And this is the first year we've really experienced, you know, not having a bus and not having transportation for our kids. And to say it's an inconvenience would be, you know, that, it doesn't even compare to really what goes on in the morning at 6:00. It's a problem. She has been, there was a period of time, you know, between the first few weeks of school where her bus was canceled on a weekly basis, once a week. And we get anywhere from eight, nine minutes notice to 15 minutes notice. Half the time, she's sitting outside at the bus stop for 10 minutes, and she's like, Ma, can you check your email again, because he's not, she's not here yet? And sure enough, you know, there was an email that went through nine minutes or 15 minutes before she's supposed to be picked up. You know, and I have another little one at home that I also have to get to, you know, to school. And, you know, this is not even, this is not really just an issue with our family, I understand that, but it's also an issue with our employers. We've been late to work, my husband and I, and my husband has to take, he has to leave work to pick her up in the afternoon. Staying home and doing the tutoring is not an option for our family, so I'm not sure what the expectation is on the parent when this happens, but, you know, it's, it's a problem. I feel like it's gotten better in the last few weeks. I know the Transportation Department, I know they're working to figure out solutions. A couple times, her bus was about 40 minutes late, and we didn't get notification of it until I called the bus garage and said, is the bus running today? And he said, yes, and then two minutes later, we got the notification that it was going to be late. And at that point, it was already 25 minutes late. So, you know, even just that communication with the parents, letting us know what's going on in the morning, would make it a little bit easier for us to rearrange our whole morning to get everybody where they need to be. I did reach out to my sister, who is a bus driver in a different district, and she worked for two different districts, and her district that she currently works in has no issues. She said they have a plethora of bus drivers. Granted, she's not in this area, she's on the other side of New York, but her old district, she said they have, they utilize every mechanic they have, they have four mechanics, they all have bus routes now. The secretary in the Transportation Department is, has their CDL license and drives a bus, and so does her boss, their, her former boss. So just some suggestions, maybe, I don't know if those things have been looked at, and if that is something that we could utilize. And I also, I mean, I know my daughter had told me that her bus in the morning has like six kids on it. So I don't know if we are able to, you know, fill the buses to capacity. I know, I think that recently, when she is, as it's gotten better, she's on a different bus, so I'm assuming that they are combining routes to make it easier, but, you know, just some suggestions on maybe, you know, solutions, because I feel like it's been three years, you know, of this, and the first two years, it was COVID, and people were sick, and, you know, we get that, but I think we need to really think outside the box and come up with some solutions to make it a little bit easier on the families, so we don't get fired from our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That concludes our first public comment period. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November first, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any, all those in favor? I opposed, extensions. Minutes are approved. Now is time for our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferno. First up, we are very pleased to welcome Nora Osahowski, Executive Director for the Boston Area Recreation Commission, who will be speaking about our partnership with BARK and some of the programming they provide to our community. Welcome, Nora.
Hi, everybody. Come to that side. I'm Nora Osahowski. I'm the Executive Director with BARK. I've been with BARK going on eight years now. Prior to this, I have been a lifelong resident of Boston Spa and was a participant in all the BARK programs when I was a kid, was a coach for my kids, and I've been a sponsor when I had my own business, so I've been involved in all aspects of BARK, and love it, obviously. It's a great organization. I'm going to tell you a little bit about BARK. A lot of people know who we are, but not everybody. We were established almost 75 years ago. We started out as a committee that was a part of the Village of Boston Spa, and we were just here to provide a couple different sports. We did some T-ball, we did some soccer, and then we got involved with the other municipalities, and over the years, we grew, and now are a not-for-profit, and we provide nine different programs. Our programs are no longer just athletics. We actually do a wonderful theater program that's been around about 18 years, and we have an arts program and an enrichment program, which covers everything. On average, we serve about 800, 1,800 students in the Boston Spa Central School District, and the majority of our programs serve grades K through six. We do serve the middle school and high school age. We have found that kids kind of get into a niche by the time they're in middle school, and they get into their clubs, and they get into their school programs, so a huge chunk of our programs are the K through six age group. Our mission and vision is to provide diverse enrichment, athletic, educational, and artistic opportunities for youth and families in our community. We strive to encourage family and community member involvement in the operation of our programs to build a stronger and more inclusive community while working closely with the Boston Spa Central School District, to identify and plan for the use of school facilities for our programs. We also partner with other community organizations, municipalities, and businesses to sponsor and grow our programs to increase the impact of BARK's efforts across the community over time. Our vision is to directly benefit the quality of life of families and the communities in and around Boston Spa, including the towns of Milton, Malta, and Boston, as well as the Village of Boston Spa, by offering affordable recreation programs so every child has the opportunity to participate and learn. That's something I can't emphasize enough. I think a lot of families, as their kids get into certain clubs and certain specializations, the price point gets outrageous. So we try to make it possible for anyone to participate in any of our programs. We have scholarships, and we keep our costs and fees extremely low. We are at least half of, half the cost of any other recreation, and not, that's not the clubs. But like Gavin Park and Clifton Park, we definitely try to really accommodate everybody, so everyone has an opportunity. The BARK programs we currently are running, we have a rather large basketball program that runs in January. The majority of our programs run for five or six weeks. It's just kind of a trial and an introduction for most things, and then some of them are leagues, like our soccer, T-ball, baseball, basketball, where they, the skill level and the competition kind of grows with the age and the amount of time, the experience they've spent. Basketball is one of those programs, that's a division league. We have, like I said, our youth theater program. We have a swim and dive program, which we are, we've been trying to rebuild since COVID. We lost a lot of our swimmers, so we were trying to rebuild that. We have, our newer program is the arts program, it's been around for five years. We've done mural painting, all different types of dance, and some interesting theater skills programs. We have our enrichment program, which is the program we originally partnered with the school district many, many, many years ago. We still do one in the original format, where we offer all kinds of classes, and people can come in for five-week segments. But we also, during COVID, had to kind of think outside the box, so we offer five-week segments at locations, like we have a Taekwondo instructor, we've been at gymnastic studios, we work with BACC a lot, and we're doing like a floor hockey program, so we kind of go all over the place. We have an indoor tennis and summer tennis program, that's one of our most popular tennis programs, or programs. We have a summer track and field. We have spring and fall soccer, which is probably how most people know us. We serve almost 500 kids in each of those seasons. We have a spring and fall now, T-ball and instructional baseball program. We are starting volleyball in January, which we're very excited, again, partnering with BACC. And new this year, we did, we're doing a floor hockey program. We're running our third segment this winter, and we're again doing that at BACC. As I mentioned before, our mission is to keep costs down and make our programs affordable. To do this, we utilize over 150 volunteers. We have probably 50 coaches in each season that volunteer their time. We have a volunteer swim commissioner, a wonderful volunteer basketball commissioner, who's been doing it for six years. We have several people who volunteer other skills, like we have someone who did field maintenance, we have someone who does website. We use a lot of volunteers to keep our costs down. We recruit local businesses and community organizations for our team sponsors. We apply for local grants to cover things, and then we've started over the last couple of years doing more fundraisers to help offset the costs. We utilize school facilities for, I'd say, 75% of our programs. Like I said, enrichment is kind of branched out a little bit, but mainly, we're here in the schools, and we've been taking donations. We love working with the community. We, a lot of our students, as they age out of our programs, we hire them. We have them working as our refs and as our instructors, and even as full-time instructors. We've had, we have, a lot of our theater staff have been with us for years, they are alumni from our theater program. And then, yeah, we utilize a lot of local businesses. Our photographer is a local business, we, all of the supplies we get, like we get things from By George, we try to stay local for as many things as we can. And then we have the Ground Control Booster Club, which is with Launching Pad, and they run our concession stand, so everything they get from concessions goes towards their booster club to support Launching Pad in the middle school. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have questions from board members?
It's not really a question, it's just, I have served on BARK for a while, I'm glad to be the liaison back serving on BARK, and I just wanted to give Nora a lot of public kudos, because having seen this role through many, many years, the partnerships that she's been able to forge with local businesses, especially bridging that gap between BACC and the district, is really a testament to your creativity and really your investment in the community, and so I just wanted to say thank you for all you do, because I know we don't pay you nearly enough, but the fact that you really have done this for our children is really wonderful, so thank you, Nora.
Thank you. I love it. It's a lot of fun.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to share that, you know, the fact that so many of your programs serve our younger students, younger children in our community, I think is, is unique and telling in that it sets the stage for their experiences in the district, in our community. I think many times, we have, you know, young, younger, the parents of these students are generally younger, and they are often newcomers to our community of Boston Spa, and so the fact that we have this program is just such a treasure, and that it's, it's an ambassadorship to the, the community, and I just want to point out that role and that service that your community and all the volunteers, which we are so grateful for, you know, bring to us. So, again, thank you so much for everything, and the district will always try and be as supportive as possible.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, I do have a few updates for the board. The first update is on the tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers, and so this particular exemption is something that our district had explored and researched, and tonight, Mr. Siriani will be able to provide some information for us.
So each of you at your table, I provided a quick summary of the exemption, took a look at what it might be for average single-family homes, based on the 10% maximum of the parameter for how much can be exempted. You can see on the right-hand side approximately how much in each of the towns, based on single-family home. Obviously, each person is going to be a little bit different. Right now, we know that approximately 25 volunteer firefighters have signed up in the town of Malta, so if you take 25 times, you know, approximately 550, you can get a sense of the volume there. We would probably see something similar in Milton. It may go up over time, it's only been out there for a year, but overall, this is looking somewhere between 25 and maybe $40,000 total across all the volunteers. They do need to meet a group of parameters. In the back of your paperwork, you have the letter from our attorneys discussing all of the parameters and limitations, and so what we're going to do is, we're going to do a little bit more investigation on possible numbers, but very few schools, only what I'm aware of is Shenandoah have actually approved this at this time, but I think that many will over the next two months. The town of Malta has approved it, it's, and both of them have done it at the maximum 10%, and have approved all the parameters with a two-year qualification. So with that information, please read what the attorneys have provided, and we'll hold a hearing either at the second meeting in December or the first meeting in January, and then at the regular board meeting, you vote to approve it, and then it takes effect for the upcoming school year tax year. Any questions? More information will be coming.
So, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Siriani, and I think it is important that we have some time to review the information. In terms of a timeline and more information coming, do you foresee that potentially in a meeting before the public hearing, or?
I was going to provide it just to the board before the hearing, so that you had additional information, and you can discuss it at the hearing. That's the whole point of the hearing, would be to discuss all the information that you wanted to put forward to the public.
Okay, so the hearing's purpose is not only for the public to comment and hear what it is, but also for the board members to have their discussion regarding it. Okay. Does anyone else have a question? Jess Law?
Yes, Brian, is, at the state level taxes, is there, like one or the other, like you either get your exemption from this or off your, your state taxes?
Well, there is a $200, you know, exemption for your income tax. I believe that they are mutually exclusive, but I'm not sure. I can look into that. So either, in your case, I think you may be hinting at that it may be that either they can take this, or they can take the other, and honestly, both, but I don't know the answer to that. I'll check with our attorneys.
Okay, thank you.
Just in interest of transparency from the public, I will be exempting myself from any discussions on this, since this would benefit my family. I just wanted to let the public know that that is a consideration, and we don't want them to be concerned about the topic of anything.
Thank you for that. Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next, I wanted to provide an update on pedestrian safety in and around Boston Ave. So as we all know, unfortunately, over the past several years, we've had two motor vehicle accidents involving student pedestrians at dismissal on Boston Ave. And so while we've tried to improve the traffic pattern, increase supervision at dismissal, after the most recent accident, I was able to speak with both Mayor Frank Rossi and Town of Boston Supervisor Eric Connolly, along with our Facilities Director Ed Martin. uh, to potentially come up with a plan, um, that we could submit to, um, the Department of Transportation for some sidewalks. And I was recently informed by Mr. Connolly that the town of Boston is seeking a grant from the New York State Department of Transportation. The Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, to complete sidewalks along Thomas Avenue and a connector from Boston Avenue to New York State Route 50 in order to enhance pedestrian connections and to provide a safe route for Boston Spa schools. Uh, and so I cannot thank, uh, the Town of Boston Supervisor Connolly enough for his efforts in applying for this crucial grant for our, for our district and our students. Um, the district has submitted a letter of support along with, uh, Mayor Rossi and other community stakeholders. And this grant application also has the support of our state representatives. Um, and so if the town has awarded this grant, the following slides show where the sidewalks will be installed. So here, here you see, uh, this is the high school, um, student lot. And so right by the community garden would be a crosswalk, um, with the flashing beacon at the top of the high school lot. Um, and next up would be the connection from Boston Ave, which is right here, um, to Route 6750 by way of a subdivision of the property between, um, the new gas station and the bank. So this would be, um, a new essentially sidewalk, uh, kind of egress to get to 67 and 50 here.
Is that around too?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
That's actually Adirondack Trust and Burlingame Orthotics.
Okay. So that's the Adirondack Trust and the Ortho- Orthodontics. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
You're welcome.
Then the, the plan here would be to connect the gaps between the existing sidewalks on, uh, 67 and 50, um, to provide safe travel here. And then a sidewalk along the alternative route on Martin behind. But also to complete the loop, sidewalk off Thomas Ave. And, well, this would allow students to return back to Boston Spa Middle School, also at Boston Ave, where there's an existing sidewalk to get back to the high school, middle school complex. So I do think this is an excellent plan, um, and will continue to work with the Town of Boston Supervisor Connolly, as well as Mayor Rossi and our state representatives, to be able to provide this safe route, uh, for our students. So this is a long time coming. Um, and again, these are, this is the proposal, and hopefully it, it gets approved and we can begin implementing this to make sure that our, our kids can, can travel safely and community members can travel safely around, uh, this area of our, of our town.
So thank you for that. Are there any questions from board members?
Uh, when will they hear about the grant?
So we're going to submit the application at the end of November. I'm not sure on the timeline of it. So we're collecting a few more letters of support, um, submitting those to, uh, Town of Boston. And then they, they look to submit the week of the 27th of November. Um, and hopefully we'll hear soon after that.
Any other questions or comments?
I just, I have one more question. I'm sorry. Um, did, um, Burlingame and the bank submit a letter? Or do they plan to submit a letter, a letter, since there is going to be an egress on their properties?
Yeah, I believe they did. They submitted, uh, letters of support for, uh, this, this grant application.
Thank you.
Still waiting on, on our Adirondack Trust. Uh, but we have verbal, um, agreements in place that they want to work with the Town of Boston to see this happen.
Mr. Ryan?
Would it be a possibility that this, um, if everything goes well, be constructed over the summer?
We'll have to see on the timeline for that. You know, uh, definitely, I think it's a priority for everyone, so.
Okay.
And, uh, I just want to comment that, um, you know, Mr. Connolly, Mr. Rossi are both here in attendance and, um, you know, just how grateful we are to the partnership that we have with our communities, with our community leaders. And, um, certainly, please, uh, communicate with Dr. Duka if there's anything else that we can do to help either, um, communicate and publicize this or also, um, any measures of support going forward at any point in the process. Um, please communicate that out, because we absolutely would, uh, be happy to, uh, support that. And again, we are, we are grateful for the, uh, for this support.
And just one, one other note, as part of our, uh, next capital project, we, we do plan to do a traffic study to see if we can address some of the traffic pattern issues that exist, um, in the high school. In the high schools, uh, student lot especially, the front lot.
Doctor, like, if I had one thing?
Sure.
I was, as I was driving in today, I noticed you do have sidewalks on both sides of the parking lot up here. And, uh, the sidewalk on the, on the north side of the parking lot, you may want to consider looking at that and possibly extending it. So there's a direct sidewalk from the high school to the potential crosswalk area. Uh, just to, so students have, have a straight line. They don't have to think about crossing anywhere but right there. That, that might steer them in the right direction.
Yeah. Fair enough. Surely we'll take a look at it.
Next up on your report?
And lastly, I wanted to provide an update on the community eligibility provision. Um, so recently, United States Department of Agriculture, um, expanded access to the community eligibility provision by lowering the minimum identified student percentage participation threshold. So it used to be at 40%. It's been lowered to 25%. Um, and so this federal change, combined with the CEP state subsidy, um, will allow students in our district to receive meals at no cost, while ensuring district receives the equivalent of free reimbursement rates for every meal. Um, and so we're currently awaiting state approval on this, but I do anticipate being able to offer free meals, uh, to our students starting December 1st.
And is there anything else for the superintendent's report?
No, that concludes it.
Okay. Thank you. Next up on our agenda are committee reports. We do not have committee meetings. Do we have anything to report from committees? We do not. Correspondence. Dr. Duka, correspondence to the district?
Yes, we had 11 total correspondence during this time period. Uh, eight emails, two regarding the, um, the CEP community eligibility provision, uh, three regarding transportation, two regarding a student matter, one regarding athletics. And we also had three, uh, phone calls, two regarding athletics, and one regarding transportation.
And correspondence to the board since the last meeting. We received one communication regarding traffic patterns at the high school and one communication regarding the, uh, New York State law, um, uh, tax exemption for first responders that was just referenced in, uh, in Dr. Duka's superintendent report. Next announcements. Mr. Williams.
Good evening. The Parents as Partners webinars continue tomorrow night. This is the discussion night. We talked about two weeks ago, um, where they had the third session last week online. And now the counselors and others will be together tomorrow night at the Wood Road Milton Harris Cafeteria, 6 o'clock, with a focus on mental health and anxiety. Um, there's a email that went out to people, as well as information on the website. They do want people to sign up if you can, because they are providing, um, childcare as well as food with that tomorrow night. So again, 6 o'clock tomorrow night. Um, you heard from the students here at the high school that they're, they're opening their play tomorrow night. So that'll continue on through the weekend. It's just the, the one weekend. And tomorrow night, we also have the Early College High School Student Information Night for eighth graders and their families, um, from throughout the region. Everyone's invited to come tomorrow night. Again, she did have an RSVP on there. It's, it's linked up from their website, um, but they are expecting a lot of people to be there. So if you're interested in learning more about our Early College High School program, it's tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, out at the HVCC North Campus. And then just some quick dates coming up next week, obviously, is the, the November recess, the 22nd through the 24th. The following week, we start our half-days for the elementary schools, um, where the, the students come in in the morning and the parents come in in the afternoon for the parent-teacher conferences. Um, the fourth Parents as Partners webinar series is on the 28th. And our World Language Lip Sync Night is on the 30th. So that's, uh, here in the, in the high school, um, 7 o'clock on the 30th, where all the foreign, or world language students, um, come together and do their lip sync night, which is always a, a good entertaining evening. Um, and then the December 1st is the Boston Spa Holiday Parade. So you can mark that on your calendars to be downtown on December 1st. And your next meeting is on December 6th.
Thank you. Any other announcements from our liaisons or board members?
Um, the Boston Spa Education Foundation is starting their yearly auction on November 28th. Um, there's some great items out there to bid on. There is, um, there's the graduation tickets, the front row seats again, that the school district donated. Um, six tickets for any senior parents out there looking to get a front row seat. There are, um, you know, anything from dining in Malta to dining in Boston Spa to, um, gifts and gadgets galore. So please, this is a huge fundraiser for us and, um, they really, uh, need your support. Every single dollar raised goes back to the school district in the form of grants to, to the teachers. Uh, so it's, it's really money well-spent, uh, to support the school district. I highly recommend it. Please look them up on Facebook, Boston Spa Education Foundation, for more information and to follow the auction.
And it's an online auction?
It's an online auction, yes.
And I assume there's links on their website as well? So from Facebook, from their website? Either one?
Yes, on Facebook. And then they'll, they are going to, they're hoping to be able to put up QR codes around the district and, um, the community. And then, uh, through some of the businesses that are, businesses that have also donated as well. Um, and then that, it does not go live until the 28th of November.
Okay. And we certainly ask and urge everyone to, uh, support that. The, um, the grant programs that they have for our, our staff, um, just allow so many extra wonderful, um, enrichment, uh, activities, things for our schools. I, I know one of the grants was a, like, outdoor classroom. We've had, um, signage and activity boards for special education students, things for our outdoor club, uh, just all sorts of wonderful things to, um, again, support and enrich our student experience.
And Katie, are they still accepting donations too for the auction?
Yes, they are still, um, accepting donations as well. So if you're a business owner out there, feel free to reach out. Um, hopefully, they reached out to you as well. And, um, it's, it's definitely a, a great, a great cause. And you see them here every spring, presenting the grants to the, um, deserving teachers.
And, uh, just to add to the, um, communication about the holiday parade, it's just an incredible village event. And the, uh, the schools will have music students at a number of different venues there. Uh, we'll have students participating in the parade. And it's just really a great, um, community event. Great job by the village. We thank them so much. And, um, we are certainly looking forward to all the activities associated with that. Any other announcements? Okay. Next up, old business. Do we have any old business? From the district? All right. Then on to new business. Bless you. Bless you. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 279, Budget Principles and Guidelines.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 279 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 280, Budget Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 280 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 281, NYSMEC Electricity.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 281 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 282, Agreement Municipal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 282 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 283, NYSMEC Natural Gas.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 283 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 284, Agreement Municipal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 284 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 285, Agreement Professional Services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 285 passes. All right. So for Resolution Number 286, you should have a amended version in front of you. It has yellow highlighting. I have a motion to amend Resolution Number 286 to the standalone version that's been provided to you, changing one of the vendors.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion to use the amended resolution passes. I have a motion to approve the amended Resolution Number 286, Award of Bid Transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The amended Resolution Number 286 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 287, Field Trip Varsity Swim.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Isn't it already over with?
So this is, uh, state, states.
I think it's just a question about the dates.
The date.
So they didn't, they didn't know when the, uh, actual tournament was going to fall for, for this field trip?
So it's a retroactive approval? It's a, it's a retroactive approval. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 287 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 288, Field Trip Music.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 288 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 289, Placement of Students with Disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 289 passes. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 290, Placement of Preschool Students with Disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution Number 290 passes. Resolutions Number 291 through 307 are recognized as a consent agenda for the purpose of Board of Education action. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Resolutions Number 291 through 307.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolutions Number 291 through 307 passes the consent agenda. Just wanna recognize, we do have in attendance our two new directors of special education, Ms. Backus and Ms. Siss, and we certainly congratulate them on their new positions, and we look forward very much to all the positive, great work you're gonna be doing in. So thank you. Now's the time in our agenda for our associations. Do we have anyone representing our associations here for comment? Okay. How about our high school PTSA or PTA? And here they are.
We just wanted to come and just say a quick hello and introduce ourselves.
Please come up.
We just wanted to say a quick hello and introduce ourselves. I'm Krista Matheson, and-
I'm Betsy Sepplewitz.
And we decided to just work together. It was an unfilled position, and we thought we would jump in and help support the high school PTSA. Both of us have multiple children in the district, and so I just are always trying to support and help where we can, and so we're looking forward to a great year with the high school. That's all.
We were gonna do a song and dance.
And, no, wonderful, and thank you so much for stepping up. And so this is the new presidents, co-presidents?
Co-presidents.
For the high school PTSA?
Yes.
All right, well, wonderful. And again, we thank you very much for volunteering, and thank the PTSA for all the great work that they do.
Thank you.
Any other PTA announcements from our liaison?
Yes, a couple of great events that happened recently. Wood Road held bingo last Wednesday. Malta Ave. had their talent show yesterday, and also Milton Terrace held their inaugural turkey shoot recently. That event helped raise over $2,000 to benefit students. Also, Milton Terrace, a couple of things to point out, beginning, they're beginning the third phase for the National School of Excellence Award based on community feedback in a recent survey. Also, events for the month of December. They announced that the Holiday Shop is on December 8th during the school day, which will provide students the opportunity to buy affordable gifts for others. They're hosting Holiday Trivia and Craft Night on December 14th at 6:30 PM, and their next meeting is on December 7th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Any other announcements for any of our associations or groups? All right. We are now at the second time in our agenda for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes.
And the same guidance that I read at the beginning of the first period is in effect, and I see that everyone has been here from the beginning of the meeting, so I will not read that again. Please keep your comments as brief as possible and addressed to the board as a whole, and remember again, we cannot address any particular student or personnel issue. So first up, Mr. Gertler?
Hi, Jason Gertler, 99 Rollin Street, Boston Spa. First off, I'd like to say thank you to Nora for her efforts with BARK. My son has benefited greatly from their program. He's moved on into Little League baseball, but he got his love, got a taste for his love of baseball with the BARK T-ball and instructional baseball. So thank you so much for that. Excellent. And I wanted to say thank you to Supervisor Connolly and Mayor Rossi for their combined efforts in ensuring our students have a safe place to walk to and from the high school and middle school complex. These sidewalks have been greatly needed for many years. My concern is, what can we do to prevent students from walking across Boston Avenue to Burlingame Parking Lot where parents are parked waiting to avoid the long lines and the pickup lines at dismissal? How can we increase, how can we increase efficiency for both parents and buses during the afternoon dismissal to prevent future accidents? You can add a thousand miles of sidewalks and a hundred crosswalks, but you can't control the speed of cars or the drivers who may be distracted driving them. And the idea that it's easier to pick up your children from a neighboring parking lot in order to avoid the bus lines and pickup lines. So maybe we should take a look at that in order to prevent future accidents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mayor Rossi?
Good evening, board. I woke up this morning around 5:30 in the morning, kind of excited, because I knew I was gonna be here to discuss, as Dr. Duca invited Supervisor Connolly and me to come by, these great new enhancements that we've been talking about for a good number of months, and ultimately, they're coming to fruition, we hope, especially with the grant application. And we know that Boston has not received this grant in the past, so leave no stone unturned when it comes to any support letters you can get and community support. I tried to start that on my Facebook page and got some good responses in short time, but you still have another 10 days, it sounds like. Please continue to do that so that the state does see fit to award this grant. But obviously, you know the rest of the story from this morning. Meredith Hamilton, 47 years old, is now, not with us any longer unfortunately due to a hit-and-run scenario. Thank you to our first responders this morning. They handled a very, very tenuous situation on Route 50. To the state police for tracking down the person from Schenectady that did this. It is a terrible situation in all directions, but having that buttress with what we were gonna talk about today, it, it goes from kind of a high, where we're gonna be solving problems, we hope, to the lows of lows. But it also is a great reminder of what we're trying to do here in your school zone, which is essentially making sure that nobody gets killed in the school zone, nobody gets hurt permanently in the school zone. In a blink of an eye, somebody is gone. And it really was that this morning, a blink of an eye, pretty much. And that could happen here. And so thank you to Supervisor Connolly for working with the property owners. We had talked, he and I, Highway Superintendent Whalen as well, the Town of Boston, Dr. Duca, about what you can and can't do. For instance, on the east side of Boston Avenue, you can't put a sidewalk if you want to right now, drainage structures, power poles, et cetera, just will not allow it. Also, where are the right-of-way areas? It's tough to tell. So this was pretty much the only way to do it, and we didn't know if the property owners would ever assent to doing it. And they apparently are, and that's a great thing, so let's take this opportunity to make sure we do it and get this fixed. I was on the phone today, we're going, we're looking at a possibility of our own TAP CMAC grant in Village of Boston Spa, which is for sidewalk connectivity, and also realizing that we have a lot of shortfalls as to getting to that grant successfully, things we need to do, just to make sure our just general sidewalks throughout the community can be handled. And you learn a lot in the process. You learn that there's a lot of money out there, but the hoops you gotta jump through to get it are pretty big, and we're going to make sure we do that on our end, and that will hopefully eventually benefit Malta Avenue School as well. But, long story short, the collaboration has been important. I have four more years now. I will apparently be over 50 years old, so Duca, we won't both be in our 40s when I'm done apparently at that point, but I look forward to working with you, Dr. Duca, you school board in the future. Hopefully not on things like this, because usually this is responsive to a disaster that occurs, but hopefully on some really exciting productive things as well, beyond fixing things that probably should've been fixed many years ago. Well, at least we're fixing them, and that's the important part right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Our next meeting will be on December 6th. I want to wish all of our students, staff members, community members a wonderful Thanksgiving recess next week, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.